The meeting, Dorde. He doesn't need that. Mr. Superintendent, would you lead us in the pledge, Superintendent Martinez?
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roque County?
Chairman Bob Larkin.
Here.
Vice Chair Bonnie Weber is absent. John Breternitz, Kitty Jung.
Present.
Dave Humke is absent.
Okay. City of Sparks?
Mayor Martini absent. Councilwoman Grady absent. Councilmember Lawson.
Here.
Councilmember Smith.
Here.
Councilmember Kerrigan absent. Councilmember Richmond absent. We do not have a vote.
Okay. City of Reno?
Gasteau.
Here.
Gasteau. Officer Pedro.
Here.
Svereda.
Here.
Dorch.
Here.
A. Azzi.
Here.
Keshaw.
Here.
And Mr. Mayor, with the clerk of Board of County Commissioners, please note that Commissioner Weber had joined us.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
This time we'll go to public comment. Excuse me, School District Roque. Sorry about that.
President Ken Green?
Here.
Vice President John Mayer's absent. Clerk of Public Intelligence is absent. Robert McCleod?
Present.
Dan Carne?
Here.
And our other members are absent. We don't have a vote.
Okay. At this time, we'll move to public comment.
Kathleen Taylor and Matt France?
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and all of you. I'm just here real quick to update you on ID Design/Build project. You guys have been very patient with us. We are planning on having traffic in its final configuration by September 20th. We opened eastbound lanes last, this weekend, and we're going to have a groundbreaking early October that we'll invite you guys all to. So, we have a couple ramp closures this week, but other than that, we hope by September 20th, it'll be wide open.
Good.
Yay.
Thank you very much for your patience.
Thank you.
Sam Diney.
Sam Diney, Encyclopedia of Reno Government. Sam is an Air Force Academy graduate. I'm Sam. Sam has spent many, 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 many years following these people. He should be leading these people if we had an honest vote count. But Sam has been following these people with erudite prophecies that have been ignored. But I cannot blame these people. By the way, I'm being Mr. Nice Guy today for Mr. Kasmierski over there. You can't really blame these people here, folks out in TV land. You can't blame them because they're really doing what the poobas tell them to do. But the media back there, the media back there is so deathly afraid and jealous of Sam Diney that they refuse to report his erudite prophecies. If they had been reporting just a few of Sam's suggestions, we would not be in this terrible pickle that Mike, the Kasminator, Kasmierski over there is going to try to dig you out of. Yes, he is. Mr. Kasmierski had the gumption, the first person in this whole community, the first person with any power in this community to ever have the gumption and moxie to sit down face-to-face with Sam Diney. He invited Sam to coffee a couple of weeks ago. We had a very interesting discussion. I think he learned more in those two hours. It was going to only be 30 minutes, but he begged for more time, so I gave him more of my time. But in those two hours, he learned more about Reno than from all of the other people who did not know what they were talking about. Anyway, I'm here to support this program that he's bringing to town. This is one of the best programs I've seen. When I was in the Air Force Academy, I created a program that has saved the nation over a billion dollars. I'm an idea man. And Mike over there guaranteed that he would keep track of me and pick my brain whenever he thought there might be an opportunity. I haven't heard from him in three weeks, but actually, the opportunity probably hasn't arisen yet. At any rate, as I close out, I want to, I just have to say this. I'm being Mr. Nice Guy, as you all can see. But I have to say something about this Reno City Attorney over there. He's been taking some static, some really, really unjustified static from some people, including the media, who has not even looked into this thing. But some of the city council members think that he is being paid too much. He's only being paid the salary that was given to him. He didn't ask for it. It was given to him. Yet, we've got city council members making massive amounts of money, far more than they deserve for living in luxury on the 15th floor of the Black Kremlin, eating caviar and drinking champagne. And we've got city council members making far too much money. And guess where their salaries come from? They vote themselves their own salaries. What's with that? My name is Sam, and I approve this message.
I have no further public comment, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Go for approval of the agenda.
Second.
Motion second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously.
Madam Clerk, did you get the first and the second?
No, I'm sorry, we did not.
I believe it was Councilman A. Azzi? No? Oh, Dorch. I know the noise came from that way. And Weber seconded.
Thank you very much.
Oh, well, I should help her, shouldn't I? But usually, I'm a little asleep, but help me, would you? At this time, we want to introduce our new superintendent of schools and give you the chance to say something, Pedro. Do you have something to say?
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, it's an honor to be here with you. Just to give you, and I know you've probably read a lot of media about me, but sometimes I think it's more, it's very important just to hear directly from the person. As your brand-new superintendent, I make critical decisions every single day. And I think it's important to understand what drives a person and what, where we're going as a school district. So, first of all, again, I just feel honored and blessed to be here with you. This is, for me, it's like coming back home. I was here in Reno back in '09 through '11 as the deputy superintendent, working under Heath Morrison. And, you know, just frankly, I grew up in Chicago, was there for 35 years, had never really been to Nevada except just visiting Las Vegas on tour, you know, just to, you know, just to visit, like most tourists, and was just amazingly surprised about how great of a community Reno is and Sparks, the whole county. And I'll tell you, I have a son, Lucas, who's 22 months. He was born here at Renown Hospital. And I think, you know, Reno's a community where, or Washoe's a community where, when you, you know, you don't really, you don't realize how much you're going to miss it until you leave it. And so, I lived in Southern Nevada for the last 15 months as the deputy superintendent in Clark County. Amazing experience, one of those experiences that's going to change my life forever. But really, got a good appreciation for education for the state of Nevada as a whole. And then, of course, you know, got the opportunity to come back to Reno and jumped at it. And like I said, for me, it is an honor. Now that I've been deputy superintendent in Washoe, deputy superintendent in Clark County, been here in Nevada for three years. And, you know, when I came in here back in '09, when my family and I moved, you know, it was very scary. You know, this was back in '09 when everything was, just seemed like it was falling apart, whether it was the economy, housing crisis. And of course, we're trying to manage our schools through this crisis. And now, to be able to, you know, be here now three years in Nevada and frankly have survived it, even though I know that we're not out of the woods, I'll tell you, I am very optimistic. I am very optimistic about where we're going as a state. I'm very optimistic about where we're going as a community. In our schools, for example, all I see right now is just, is just the possibilities and the potential. One of the things that we're pushing for, you know, so our graduation rates, you know, are now one of the, you know, some of the highest that they've ever been. And by the way, in Southern Nevada, when the results come out for last year, they will also have seen gains that they haven't seen before in almost in a decade. And so, now, our state, our state will be seen differently, I believe, on the national perspective because I, we know how important it is for companies, for businesses that want to expand here in Nevada, how important education is. And so, for me, you know, just knowing that I've seen the gains and improvements in Southern Nevada, I've been part and been leading the gains here in Northern Nevada, for me, like I said, I just have nothing but optimism. So, just to give you a taste of what we're seeing in our district. So, today, we're going to release our proficiency results. My communication staff would kill me if I gave you a preview of those results, but I'll tell you, they're good. We have great schools. We have great things going on in our buildings. And I'll tell you, as we look at the future, one of the things that we realize is that we're ready, we're ready to take the district to the next level. So, what does that mean? That means that not only do we want to graduate children, but we want to make sure they're college and career-ready, and we want to be tangible about what that is. I'll give you an example. So, in Southern Nevada, you know, they made a lot of mistakes when they were growing, a lot of mistakes, but they got some things really right. And an example is some of their career tech programs are some of the best that I've ever seen in the country. And I've seen schools down in Southern Nevada where literally now the schools are completely digital. High schools of 1,500 to 2,000 students where they're following different career paths, whether it's in technology, in STEM, in medical, health science. And it is amazing, when you go into those buildings, it is like magic. Those children want to be there. There was a high school that actually has an aviation program, Rancho High School, where children are getting pilot licenses coming out of high school. And what's amazing is the department chair is actually a former, a former, a former person that was in the Air Force. Very proud of the school, by the way. I mean, amazingly proud. And we have kids there that actually are, we had a group of kids that won an award for redesigning an airplane engine that uses 30% less fuel. These are high school children. So, for me, you know, when I look at what we're doing here in Northern Nevada, there's no reason why we can't have those types of programs. So, count on us having technology hubs, STEM hubs, medical, pre-med hubs, and we're going to be doing these relatively quickly. You know, and I've been talking to many of our legislators, and I share with them that, you know, the only thing that can slow us down is frankly resources. And so, because of that reason, I'm going to be advocating very heavily with Carson City this year, and frankly, I need all of your help. This is something that, you know, we can't do it by ourselves, but, but, you know, we know, we know what we need for, to take our district to the next level. And having these types of programs, and I've already met with Mark Johnson, and he and I have already agreed that we're going to have every one of these programs completely aligned to the studies at UNR. Because I'll tell you, and I'm not going to be shy about this. I don't want just children graduating. I want them to be engineers. I want them to be, God bless them, if they want to be teachers, to get into the College of Education, to get into the Business College, to get into Science. I mean, we have some of the most amazing programs right here in our backyard with TMCC and UNR, as well as the Community College down in Carson City. So, there's no reason for us not to be aligned. Not, I want to make sure our children have direct pathways right from middle school all the way to college. And again, you know, I just see just amazing opportunities in partnering with the cities, the county, because again, these are all of our children. And so, if we all work together, there's literally no limit to where our schools are going to go and what our children can accomplish. So, thank you for having me. It is an honor for me to be here.
Thank you, and welcome aboard. This time, we'll move on to item number six. Discussion potential direction to staff regarding the Western Nevada Development District. Mr. Carrier, who's going to make?
Yes. Mayor, county commissioners, board members, council members, really the elected leadership of our region, especially in Washoe County with the two cities and the city council. Thank you for taking the time today to talk about this issue. It's pretty important as we try to work together to create an economic environment to grow our economy. And when Sam Diney supports something, then normally, my sense is that the vote is no. But in this particular case, I think Sam's dead-on in that we are really at a point where we can work together better to create jobs for our economy here. And that's what our presentation today is going to cover. It's about jobs and resources for our region. It's about supporting the Recharge Initiative that you all have been a part of to this point and cooperating more closely as a region. And ultimately, working in support of the state's economic development strategy and the regional economic development strategy where we actually set out as one of our objectives, the Comprehensive Economic Development Strategy Certification, the CEDS, certification that will allow us access to federal funds in support of growth of our region. So, as I turn it over to Ron Radio and Dean Haymore, here are some of the things that we're going to, you saw the things we're going to talk about. Let me turn it over to the, to the two experts on Western Nevada Development District, and they can talk a little bit about what that district does. Thank you.
Thanks, Mike.
Mr. Mayor, councilpeople, commissioners, board members, trustees, thanks for the opportunity to come here today to talk about Western Nevada Development District, which is the only economic development district in the state of Nevada. When I say economic development district, we're talking about a voluntary association of local governments. It's voluntary. You don't have to be a part of, part of the district, but I think there are some tremendous benefits that come out to local governments that are, that are members of the district. One of the things that we have to do for the Economic Development Administration to maintain our certification as an EDD, and if I use acronyms, you can interrupt, is to have what is called a Comprehensive Economic Development Strategy, otherwise known as CEDS, CEDS. This is a document that we have to basically rewrite, revise every five years and that we have to update annually. And it's a multi-purpose document. In the past, the focus of our CEDS has been on the Economic Development Administration, which is part of the U.S. Department of Commerce. But it's a multi-purpose document, identifies needs, issues, goals, strategies, and projects and initiatives of both a regional and a local nature. I want to emphasize a regional and local nature. So, even though we are looking at a regional effort here, we still take into account local needs and local issues in how we implement the CEDS. The other thing I want to, I guess maybe reinforce is that the CEDS, as a multi-purpose document, can be used by local governments or other entities to access and justify an application to the Economic Development Administration as well as to other state, federal, and local funders, as well as into the private sector. Because, again, through the CEDS, you have identified through this process what your projects and your initiatives are that you would like to work on. We do have some slides that talk about some of the projects that we've worked on in the past. The focus of the district, when it was originally implemented and organized in 1983, was to work with the local governments and with EDA to secure EDA funding for infrastructure for publicly-owned industrial parks. And to this point, we have been able to do that in the seven counties that we originally had, expanded to eight last December, and willingness to expand to nine next month. What we do is our board is comprised, has to be comprised of 51% locally-elected officials. And I think this is extremely important because when you do have community development projects or you do have economic development projects, and if it's going to be particularly of an infrastructure nature, we all know who ends up being responsible for operation, maintenance, and improvements of said infrastructure, the local government. So, the local governments really need to be involved in this process for economic and community development. When we talk about, we use the term economic development district, or we use the term economic development. Our board has always looked at economic development activities and community development activities being intertwined. We cannot necessarily separate the two into two different functions or into two different pots. One of the other things that we do at the district is we do write grant applications for our local governments. And this will give you an idea of some of the ones that we've done recently. FY12, in my experience in working for economic development districts, was absolutely a phenomenal year in that we were able to implement a project in each of the eight counties. Never had that happen. Never ever have it happen again, but FY12 was tremendous. Some of the things that we did through a couple of SBA grants was that we paid for nine next-level classes, which are those business training classes that are prepared and delivered by the Nevada Small Business Development Center. Out of those nine, we did, they did conduct a survey, and there were 208 attendees in those classes. The respondents said they were going to create 42 jobs, probably another 82 jobs being created over time, and an initial investment of around $33 million. The next-level classes are extremely important because out of those next-level classes, we may have a future Bill Gates or someone like that that we don't know about at this point in time. The other thing that we've, that we're doing right now through one of our SBA grants, which we're really excited about, is a project that we have funded in Douglas County to look at the feasibility of either a physical or a virtual business science park in that area. And what is important about this project is that the contractors are meeting individually with the businesses to try and determine what some of their workforce needs are and how they relate, what, you know, what do they buy? Are they buying it locally? Do they have work that they need contracted? Are they contracting it out? And one of the big things that we've discovered is the fact that one of the manufacturers needed a small PVC part that had to be threaded for their manufacturing process, and they were doing this out of state. Because the contractor is talking to other businesses, they located one a half-mile away that has the capability of producing that part. So, in this process, we're getting them connected together to be able to do this work locally. It's also brought in Western Nevada College into this process because they're looking at doing some things specifically related to workforce in the manufacturing in the area of electronics and possibly some certifications. This process has also got some of the companies connected with UNR to see how they could benefit with them. The, one of the other projects that we've done, we did put together an application for Mineral County Economic Development Authority to secure funding from USDA for refrigerated trailer for small farmers to be able to get their produce to farmers' markets or to a central point, and then maybe get it into the restaurants throughout the area. This is an example, I think, of a regional collaboration in a regional project that the district is capable of doing. Another one, another project we're working on, it'll, again, I think, is small baby steps, and that's how we do things quite a bit of the time, is we are establishing a revolving loan fund through USDA, their Rural Business Enterprise Grant Program. It's very small, but it'll give us the ability to work through this, and then hopefully, in the future, being able to expand the revolving loan fund program into other areas. As I stated earlier, WNDD is a voluntary association of local governments. Right now, those members are Carson City, Douglas County, Churchill, Lyon, Story, Pershing, Mineral, and Humboldt, which just came on, became part of the district in December of last year. I mentioned earlier that the board is comprised of elected officials, so members are allowed or entitled to appoint two of the elected officials if they choose to do so, or staff to represent them at the board meetings. And the process would work where we, when I say we, the board, would approve resolutions for new members to join. And we're looking, we're going to be scheduling that for our October 9th board meeting, which will be in Ferling. Back in August, on the 14th, we did have some representatives from Washoe County. Councilman Lawson was there from Sparks to consider a request by the district board to accept Washoe County as part of the district. It just makes sense. I've been with the district for 10 years now, and thinking about this process in that 10-year timeframe. It is a very defined economic development region to include Washoe County. One of the things we've been doing at the district has been working with USDA on the Stronger Economies Together Program. And we've been at, working with this process since last February. One of the things that I asked Tom Harris to do at UNR was whenever we gather data or we get data for our SET process, to also include Washoe County data. Because we cannot do economic development planning or look at a regional development plan without that kind of information being considered. So, I think that's about it. We do have Dean Haymore with me this morning, or he showed up. Dean is the president of WNDD, and he's got probably a few remarks, and then we'll take some questions.
Make them quick. Good morning, everybody. Thanks for having us here today in front of you. I've been with Story County 26 years. I've been on this board 26 years. I'm the one, been president, I don't know, five or six years. I think they keep on putting me a president because fortunately or unfortunately, or whatever, I get to go back to Washington, DC, and I get to come back with some real money. I'm one that believes that the money should be used for bricks and mortar. We put it in the ground. We put it out in the communities. It doesn't do any good sitting there. I'm one that believes that we need to create those jobs. I'll be the first one to tell you, I'm one that doesn't like government. I doesn't like taxes. That's probably why a lot of you guys are sitting here, that we have to run government like a business, and we need to get back to providing those services to those companies out there that are paying our, my paycheck. I recognize that I work for every one of those taxpayers in Story County. I love my job. I work hard at my job. And as most of you know, in the last 26 years, we've created an industrial park out of Story County that is worldwide known. And it's a team that works together. It's a region that works together. I could not have that industrial park successful without each and every one of you because 99% of those people live in your community. 99% of those people spend their money, buy their houses, put their kids to school. We know that's an impact on you, but we also know that you get those revenues, and we provide some jobs there. I also know that if we're going to go forward, and I always plan five generations, my great-great-grandchildren, I want them to say that I did something right, that in 100 years, that they have the quality of life to live, the opportunities to succeed that I do, that I did. And that's important to me. And so, I look at it at a different way. Sometimes I get criticized, but I know I try to do what is right. And if I fall, I fall forward and get back up and go forward again. Thank you. If you have any questions, we're here to answer. We're here to welcome you to join the organization, to be part of that organization, to help us go forward as a region, as the Northern Nevada region, as the Northern Nevada Economic Development Authority, to provide jobs, to provide a quality of life that people come here, that you live here, and I live here because we love it here. Thank you.
Thank you. Any, yes, sir?
I have one quick follow-up. And I don't think I really fully addressed this when I was talking about the CEDS. You know, EDON has developed a strategic plan. We have other development authorities within the region that have also developed plans. We have the Stronger Economies Together Program that will end up with a blueprint for economic and community development. All those local planning All those local planning efforts are going to be incorporated and be part of the SEDs because it's important, again, to bring the local planning process into the SEDs so that we have these projects and these initiatives identified on a regional as well as a local, as well as a local level, to be able to access these other sources of funding. Thank you. Any questions?
Any questions? Anybody? Yes, sir.
I don't really have a question, but I just want to tell Ron and Dean, you know, for my, in the brief time that I had been involved with economic development, I've become a firm believer in the idea of the regionalized kind of approach to economic development. It's my feeling that when people come to Northern Nevada, they don't really care about jurisdictions. They, they look for the best place to locate their business, and those businesses that are currently here obviously have already made a choice, so they're, it's, it's supporting them to expand. But, but when the relocations come into play, sometimes jurisdictions get in the way. And so I just want to tell you that I, I'm very much supportive of this, this, and I think it's going to be, for the long term, a lot better for Northern Nevada to be joined rather than, you know, the minor conflicts and that sort of thing. So anyway, I applaud you for this effort.
One quick, one quick follow-up to that. We have one of our SET team members go to an economic development training in Illinois. And she's been through this process since February, and she was there, I believe, in during the month of August. At a recent meeting, she told me people there from different jurisdictions in Illinois and Iowa were all like this. And she said, "Here, because of the SET process, the SET program that we've been doing, we think like this." So that's something that, you know, again, we just need to be looking at that and implementing.
Good.
Yeah, I, I want to just thank you guys, number one, for extending this invitation to us. I know this was not an easy decision for you guys. We kind of have a reputation of being the big bad guys over here in Washoe County, but I think you're exactly right. A regional approach is definitely what's needed. What's good for you guys is good for us, and what's good for us is good for everyone else. So it, it's a great deal. I'm supporting this wholeheartedly, and thank you again.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Mike?
Thank you, Ron and Dean. And you can tell the Western Nevada Development District has been busy bringing federal funding to the region in support of job creation and really a lot of other things. So you've done a great job so far, and this is really an exciting opportunity, and we mentioned opportunity up there, opportunity for the region. When I got here nine and a half months ago, early on in my figuring out what's going on process, I realized we did not have SET certification in Washoe County. And I asked questions and kind of looked into it and said, you know, we're missing huge opportunities, because right now, the EDA funding is really being pushed to regions that need job growth, and our unemployment rate is so high, it puts us right at the front of the list. So if we just get applications in, we will certainly find opportunities to use those federal tax dollars in support of job creation, at least to a point where we get our unemployment numbers down to where they need to be. So it really is exciting for us. We looked at two options. This is one of the things in the strategic plan we talked about. One is go it alone, and we talked about a lot of reasons why not to do that, but that is an option and something we explored. Costs money, costs time. And, oh, by the way, it doesn't help us work together as a region, the option we chose. And, and with a lot of help from many of you, and I've had a chance to meet with almost all of you now, many of you pushing hard to working together as a region. And certainly, there's been a lot of leadership. Katie and others who have stepped forward, the mayor, have stepped forward and said, "Let's figure out how we do this thing together better." And Sean and his leadership with Recharge has certainly been instrumental to many of those processes. So we moved down that path, and what we got, what we have right now is a tremendous opportunity. And, and hearing some of the comments already, it seems we kind of get it. But just to make it a little easier for those of you who are on the line, creating a mega economic development district gives us competitive advantage. As we compete in the West for EDA grants, being a larger region gives us a tremendous advantage. And I refer you to page seven of your recent EDA awards, it's in your handouts. And just to touch on three recent EDA grants that sound like they would make sense here, $117,000 to East Central University for the purchase and installation of IT infrastructure. We probably need some IT infrastructure. $2 million for Richmond Community College to renovate and expand a state-of-the-art high-tech training hub for science, technology, and engineering center. I know we have plans to look at how we're going to do more of that here. And $551,000 in Lee County, Florida, to fund preliminary design modeling for research incubator facilities for, for Lee County. So you can see there are opportunities out there in the millions, and this really opens a great door and an opportunity for us, and it is our fastest path to being treated as a mega-region. I would, I would just want to finish by saying, again, at the end of the day, it's about jobs. And for those of you who had the opportunity to be at the Urban Outfitters grand opening last week, and, and the mayor and others were there, what matters are the people that need jobs right now. And we, we brought up at that event about 50 employees that didn't have jobs before Urban came here and will now have jobs for the holidays. And if we can find ways to use these resources to better grow our infrastructure, fix our training facilities, or upgrade our training facilities, build programs that get people better qualified for the, for the job opportunities that EDON is working very hard to bring to this region, we really are going to make the holiday season and the coming year a whole lot better. So I thank you for your, your consideration on this important matter, and I turn it over to Sean Carey for his discussion from a Recharge Nevada perspective. Thank you.
Thank you. The, the course ahead for Reno, Sparks, Washoe County, and our school district, our community colleges, gets better today with your direction to your staffs to put this on the agenda for you to appoint the elected officials and the private sector representatives or your staff to begin the work on this mega-region economic plan. It is right at the top of the reasons you created the Recharge effort, to create a formal structure. And what I'm excited about is this will put elected leaders at the table in a mega-region to begin to solve some of the challenges we have in making Nevada competitive with the rest of the country. We've also completed the second bullet point now. We do have a regional economic development plan. It's done with Mike Kozmierski. It got to the finish line in time for them to be part of the governor's distribution of funds. We're up and running. We've also completed the third one, which is to be sure we have the ability to use catalyst funds. And your staff, from Katie and John Burkett at the county, to Andrew Klinger, and Bill Thomas and Peter Wellish at the city of Reno, myself and Armando Arnellis, as far away as Douglas County, Dean Haymore has been at the table at every meeting we've ever had. See the Western Nevada Development District as that next step. It's an investment of $5,500, and it gives you a platform to find three goals. We finish these three, let's pick up the next three, and let's finish them in the next year and move Nevada forward. So I'd simply close by saying, please move today to direct your managers to put this on agendas in the near future so that they can meet the timing for the Western Nevada Development District's next meeting, and we'll move forward together. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any questions, Danby? Okay, having no other public comment right now, bring it back to the table.
Can you order?
Excuse me. You have a public comment? Okay, sorry.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Sam Dene.
Sam Dene, Encyclopedia of Reno Government. And I figured this issue is important enough for at least one person in this community of 300,000 people to have the interest to come to the podium and say something about it. And I'll be very brief in my measly three minutes anyway. I, I met with Mr. Kozmierski. Took me a few days to learn how to pronounce that, but I got it down now. Mr. Kozmierski has come to town, and he's running EDON. And if I got one thing out of that meeting with him, he wants to provide jobs for this community. He wants to provide good jobs. And I have nothing against the previous leader over there at EDON, but I never quite heard him be so adamant about that. And he said, Mr. Kozmierski, Mike said, he wants them to be quality jobs, just not a bunch of jobs. And by the way, it just so happened by coincidence that during that meeting, the man, a man who was that close, about a thousand, a couple thousand missing votes away from being the mayor of Reno, leading this whole meeting, he happened to show up there just by coincidence. So Mr. Kozmierski had a chance to meet this very talented Marine Corps veteran, and guess what? That man was that close to being the mayor of Reno, and he doesn't even have a job. How do you answer something like that? So close to being the mayor of Reno. I wonder what would happen to, Mr. Mayor Koshel had not been elected, and that other guy had won, would Mayor Koshel be without a job? What are the chances of that? It's hard to get a job in this town, and this EDON thing is even more important than it's ever been before because, according to the media just this morning, gambling in this community is really on a downhill slide. Las Vegas is recovering like it's never recovered in history relative to its gambling capabilities, and Reno-area gambling statistics were weighed down. So we're really going to need something to cover up for that lost revenue, for those jobs that might be thrown out there in the street. So I'm, I'm behind this man, and I'm hoping that, that Tahoe-Reno Industrial Complex can become viable. It needs to be pushed more. And as I understand this deal here, they're going to vote as to whether or not to let you people join that operation over there, and that seems like a no-brainer. How do you not bring the gurus into that thing and really push this thing hard?
Thank you very much. Any others?
No, sir.
All right. Mr. Frazek?
Yeah, just a quick question for Mike, because the gaming numbers were released today, and, and Clark saw a spike, and, and Washoe saw a decrease again. So I think the timing on this is really good. What are we doing to, to try and combat that? Because, I mean, we're seeing this trend month after month with the, the decline in, in gaming revenues.
Well, we're doing whatever we can, and it's a whole lot, really. More aggressive attraction strategy, working real hard on the retention, and starting our entrepreneurial growth. So the three legs of economic development are being hit very hard. Working together as a team is what makes it work better. And that's, again, part of what we're trying to do here. Bring in more funding, help train. We know there's a quality workforce here. The feedback we get from our employers is the workforce here is quality. In some cases, it needs training. We could use SEDs money to help some of those training programs, maybe take a construction worker, use their skills, and run them through a program that allows them to work in manufacturing. And we have many manufacturing prospects right now. 40% of our 140 or so prospects are in the manufacturing sector. We need to take that workforce and make sure it meets the needs of the future employer. So we have a lot going on, and I, I'll tell you, the pipeline is pretty full right now. And just like the Urban Ribbon Cutting, which we had, we had 200 job announcement the week before, and others. So we've got some things happening now, but you're exactly right. It's, you know, we bring in 100, we lose 200. So we've got to work, continue to work as a team to grow that economy, and, and my sense is you're all on board to do that, which is, makes the job a whole lot easier.
Mike, are they at the table? I mean, the gaming operators, are they at the table in this, this whole strategy? Because in the past, it seems like that hasn't occurred.
Well, the gaming has their challenges, and I think they're working on their challenges right now, and really part of the much larger visitor convention and gaming strategy, you see some of that. What they're doing is working, trying to bring more local involvement in, and some other things that help them sustain themselves, and moving more towards resort concept, which is gaining a lot of traction. So I see the gaming industry continuing to be an important part of this economy, but they're only 4% right now. They're not a huge part of our economy, and as we move forward, they will continue to be an important part, but they're changing into a different model that allows them to be effective.
Thank you.
Anything else? Okay. Thank you. Do you want to give instructions as a whole or individually to our groups?
I, I don't know that formal action's required, but I think any commissioner can request the, the county manager to place this on a future agenda item, and I'll do so at this time, unless a commissioner wants to take formal action. I don't see that.
Hmm?
No, that's got to be, it's got to be agendized to do that, yeah. All we were agendized to do today is to receive the information.
Same motion for the city.
Good, that wasn't a motion, but you're telling him, and I think he heard you, his head's going in the right direction, so.
Same direction for Mr. Carey.
That expedits it. Thank y'all for your report. Really appreciate it very much. Thank you. All right.
Back to work now, Dean.
Now we'll go to item number seven. Discussion potential direction staff regarding the interim consolidated tax subcommittee.
Are you going to do the presentation on this, Mr. Mayor?
Who woke him up?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Katie Simon, Washoe County Manager, for the record. And it is my pleasure to introduce Jeremy Aguero, who has come up from Southern Nevada today just specifically to speak to you all. He has been leading the working group that is supporting Legislative Interim Committee looking at consolidated taxes. And a lot of folks have worked very hard, and Jeremy has worked the hardest to provide good information and great leadership to keep that process moving forward. So without further ado, Jeremy Aguero.
Mr. Mayor, council members, commissioners, appreciate the effort. Board members, appreciate the opportunity to be here. I'm going to give you a brief overview of the Nevada Consolidated Tax, and more specifically, some of the recommended changes to that consolidated tax made by a working group of local governments to the Legislative Subcommittee that's been studying this topic. Just as a, a brief bit of background, on June 15th of 2011, the Nevada State Legislature passed Assembly Bill 71, or it was actually signed into law by the governor on that day. It requires an interim committee to study the allocation of money distributed from the local government tax distribution account. This is the fancy name that the legislature uses for the consolidated tax. In fall of 2011, our firm, a firm called Applied Analysis, was retained jointly by the City of Henderson and the City of Las Vegas to develop a consolidated tax model and begin working on developing strategies and alternatives. Between February 1st of 2012 and August 30th of 2012, an interim subcommittee, a Legislative Interim Subcommittee, held six meetings. A working group comprised of local governments, north and south, urban and rural, conducted more than 40 meetings to review and analyze the consolidated tax, to test and vet alternatives, and ultimately to bring recommendations to that same Legislative Subcommittee. Let me begin in terms, just spending a moment, talking about what exactly the consolidated tax is. You may very well know that it's among the largest sources of revenue that local governments have. But simply put, the consolidated tax is little more than a formula that's designed or used to equitably distribute a number of revenue sources among local governments on the first tier to the counties and Carson City, and on the second tier to some 170 political subdivisions within those counties. This includes special districts, it includes cities, counties, towns, and the like. What taxes are distributed? The major sources of those taxes are the basic city-county relief tax and the supplemental city-county relief tax. You may recognize those more by their common name. That's the sales tax that goes to local governments. We also distribute the real property transfer tax, the cigarette and tobacco taxes, liquor taxes, and the governmental services tax, all through the consolidated tax. 95% plus of that money, however, is part of those sales taxes that get distributed. This tax is remarkably complicated. I, I hate to be the one to inform you of that, but it is a maze beyond belief. I'm going to show you some slides. I have no intention of either reading those slides to you or asking you to read them on your own, but I think when you just kind of look at this tax and you imagine, this is how we would construct something, it seems perhaps a little bit odd. You know, all the revenues come in, they get distributed in different ways, they get deposited in certain accounts. For those of you that either read as children or have children who have read choose-your-own-adventure books where you have to say yes or no, you go one direction, you go another, and ultimately you end at some place, that's pretty much how the consolidated tax works. This is the last of the slides, but there's all kinds of different ways to determine how much you get and how much the revenue should be distributed and the like. These complications have become worse. These complications have become worse over time as we've tried to modify the consolidated tax to essentially work for 170-plus governments. We have one system that is designed to distribute these funds between counties as large as Clark and as small as Esmeralda, to special districts and enterprise districts, to cities and towns, and somehow do that in a perfectly equitable and always rational way. Sometimes it has worked, other times it has not. It has also been something of a moving target. It's not as though the consolidated tax in the form that it exists today has always looked like it does today. In 1995, we began the origins, in 1997, it began to be what it's like today. Again, I don't intend for you to read all of this, nor do I intend to present it all to you, but rather only to impress upon you that this has been an evolution, that the consolidated taxes that exist today has been something that didn't sort of, it doesn't look like it did in its original form. In 2001, there were very significant modifications to the consolidated tax, including the one that folks talk about more than any other. The going away from this thing called 1+ and going to something called 0+. And as I see some of the heads nodding, you remember the pain that we went through in sort of this discussion as well, and probably some of the reasoning underlying it. 2003 and 2005 sessions, again, the consolidated tax was modified, and in 2011, Legislature passes AB 71 that leads to this idea that, hey, we've got additional problems with the consolidated tax, we need to revisit it. Of course, during the five, the last five years, the state of Nevada has dealt with relatively unique economic circumstances. The state of Nevada led the United States during the front half of, well, let's say the last seven years in terms of growth. More population, more employment, more investment than almost anywhere in the country. By contrast, today, we lead the nation in almost every indicator of economic decline. During the past four years, we rank number one in terms of unemployment, in terms of job loss as a percentage of our total workforce, in terms of housing price devaluation, in terms of foreclosure, and in terms of bankruptcy. This in turn has led to some of the difficulties that we have with the consolidated tax, both in terms of its inability to produce as much revenue as I think state, local governments would like, but also in terms of how the mechanics of the consolidated tax works. This tax is designed to try and adapt over time. As revenue, more revenues come in, they need to be distributed. As fewer revenues come in, they need to be distributed less to each particular entity. So we recognized in 2011 that the consolidated tax has some significant problems, a recognition that happened certainly long before, but one that became somewhat acute in 2011, and I'll show you why in a moment. I would certainly suggest that it has some problems, and we have choices. We can either fix the consolidated tax, or we can live with it. Living with it is going to become increasingly difficult and increasingly painful, but the consolidated tax, it doesn't, the outcomes are not what we intended, but the mathematics still generally work. Let me just talk about this for just a moment in terms of these principal concerns with the tax. Number one, the distribution formula as it was originally constructed. When the consolidated tax was originally created, going back to 1997, it was designed to perpetuate the status quo or to favor slower-growing entities. This is why the 1+ was put into the formula, and this wasn't a mistake, it wasn't an error by any stretch of the imagination. It was designed to do exactly what it did. It was designed to be as stable as possible. The problem with that is that particularly urbanized areas of the state didn't always grow in the same way. And if one entity was growing much faster than another, it was a general belief that maybe that entity should start to capture some additional consolidated tax revenue. As originally designed, if your community grew at 9% and your next-door neighbor grew at 1%, your growth rates would be almost exactly the same. And so, and we changed that. Changes to that tax, those large fixes occurred in 2001 and have had unintended consequences. There were two significant changes. One is getting rid of that 1+, so more growth would go to faster-growing areas. The second was that we said, no longer will the taxes that you get next year be based on the taxes you get this year. No, no. Instead of doing that, we're going to establish a base, we're gonna grow that base by essentially the rate of inflation, and then anything that's left over is going to be put in a giant pool of revenue called excess. And we're all gonna compete for that excess based on how fast your population grows and how fast your assessed value grows. This has had some pretty significant unintended consequences, particularly it works very differently on the way up than it does on the way down. The formula struggled to adapt to the boom-bust cycle, right? During the growth periods, it actually worked fairly well. During the decline, some entities declined very much faster than other entities because specifically of their dependence on this excess portion of the calculation. Sharp town turns and property values are distorting distribution mechanics. Over the past five years, we have seen entities in the state of Nevada report assessed value declines in excess of 50%. Houses are worth half of what they were about five years ago. Sad to be sure, huge amounts of debt, but from a consolidated tax standpoint, because that is one of the elements we use in the distribution formula, all of a sudden, hey, if my property taxes go down by, let's say, 17% in one year, and my population goes up, I still get zero in terms of that excess. Why? Because those two numbers are added together, creating a real distortion in the formula. Figured out ways to fix that. And then there are also concern over legacy base allocation issues. There have been arguments going all the way back to the early 1980s, talking about how the bases were originally calculated and how they should exist today. Those are true, North and South, Urban and Rural. Folks from Fernley to North Las Vegas to the City of Reno have brought up these issues, and so certainly we wanted to have conversations about them. The review process itself was extensive. The consolidated tax has any number of moving parts. I'm just going to put these up for you for a moment to demonstrate the number of meetings that we had. The folks in Northern Nevada were nice enough to host us for about half of the in-person meetings that we had. We had those meetings using online technology to allow folks to come. We had about 40 participants in over 40 meetings overall. Those meetings were held with individual jurisdictions, with subcomponents. We had Southern Nevada meetings, we had Northern Nevada meetings, we had library district meetings, we had incorporating city meetings and the like. August 30th, 2012, the Subcommittee meets for their final review of this committee's recommendations. They then request, the chairwoman, Chairwoman Kirkpatrick requests that between September and October, that local governments and individual jurisdictions review with managers and elected officials the recommendations for the consolidated tax, such that when the Legislature reconvenes in February of 2013, that they can take action as soon as possible. The reason for this is because if we don't take action, probably within the first 45 days of the state legislature, there will not be time to make the recommended changes going into the next tax year. The bottom line is there were 40 meetings conducted over eight months on the consolidated tax. There was consensus among the local government representatives to that working group. There was also approval from the Department of Taxation. We reviewed what we did from them, not that they're required to approve it, but that we weren't creating an administrative burden on the Department of Taxation. There was also unanimous acceptance from the Legislative Subcommittee relative to the recommendations that were offered. So what are those recommendations? Shifting from Plan A to Plan B on the consolidated tax, there are eight of them that I will go over very briefly relative to this. Number one is this idea of this base carryforward. The second is a five-year average for the Consumer Price Index. The third is this plus factor that we talked about, going away from the 0+, which has mechanical problems, setting a floor for property tax declines. So a 20% reduction in assessed value doesn't mean you get nothing on a go-forward basis. Adjusting the timeline for Memoranda of Understanding and Population Estimates, Library Districts, and Incorporation Clarifications. I've grouped some of these for purposes of my demonstration or my overview today. I'm gonna put the base carryforward and the five-year CPI together. Well, so let me just take one step back before I step forward. What is this animal we call the base? The consolidated tax has two component parts to it. Since 2001, each jurisdiction had an established base. It's just an amount of money, let's say it's a million dollars for purposes of discussion, and every year, that amount of money gets, as long as there's more money out there, that amount of money gets increased by the rate of inflation, and every jurisdiction is guaranteed to get that amount of money before we dip into any additional money that's distributed differently under an excess calculation. All right? What has this meant for us? Well, if we look statewide, this is the share of revenue that has come from the excess. So what you see is that the revenue has outpaced inflation, and it should. We were growing relatively rapidly during that time, population, employment growth, a lot of investment in activity. Fast-growing jurisdictions became increasingly dependent on this amount of excess, this money in addition to whatever their base was. Slower-growing entities were receiving roughly half of what faster-growing entities were in terms of that excess distribution. Now, they were also growing fast. This is exactly what it was designed to do. Unfortunately, when this formula that we amended in 2001 also works in reverse, right? So when all of a sudden revenue started to go down, if you're the guy that's more dependent on that 43% of that excess formula, and it starts to go down, you're in a lot of trouble. Okay? In addition to that, none of that excess was ever added to the base. It's not like because you got, if you had a million dollars this year, and then you got half a million dollars of this excess next year, that your base for the following year was 1.5 million dollars. That's not the way it worked. If we just look here in sort of Washoe County examples, with Washoe County, City of Reno, and City of Sparks, it's not as though those totals on the right-hand side of my exhibit became your base for the following year. But rather, the base is merely that base calculation, and everyone got the joy of competing for that excess depending on what your growth factors were. You'll notice here that those growth factors were significantly different. The primary fundamental first recommendation that this committee made is that this process needs to stop, that whatever an entity got in terms of its total distribution should be part of its base on a go-forward basis. This is rational, it is good, it's better tax policy, and it eliminates this growing competition, particularly during peak years for those funds. So what is the recommendation? Currently, Nevada revised statutes requires that prior-year C-tax allocation minus any excess, plus, times, excuse me, times 1+, the percentage change in CPI becomes your base for the next year. It's just a calculator, that's just a complicated way of saying that your base just gets to grow by CPI. You'll notice that the recommendation on the right-hand side of the slide has two component parts to it. One is that whatever you got last year becomes your base for this year. That way, if you're growing a little bit faster, that gets added to your base. If you're growing a little bit slower, your base doesn't grow by as much. Good tax policy. The second thing that you'll notice is that instead of just one-year CPI, we're using five-years CPI. Why are we doing that? There is, within the model today, the way the formula is currently constructed, there is large risk in terms of hyperinflation. We are very concerned. Of course, our federal government has been relatively aggressive with regard to monetary policy, and in doing that, there's a risk of, increased risk of hyperinflation. If that were to occur, this would be very problematic under the consolidated tax. By using five years' worth of CPI, instead of a single year of CPI, we limit the risk associated that. Why do we do that? Excess carryforward creates distribution inequities, particularly when the economy declines. That is now gone. Allows the consolidated tax to evolve over time. As jurisdictions grow faster, they will receive a little bit more of the consolidated tax, respecting the fact that all jurisdictions will be guaranteed to get their base so long as sufficient revenue is available. The misconceptions that excess is extra also go away. I don't know how many legislators I have talked to, even some local government folks, who come to me and say, well, that's just extra money. The excess is just, is just additional funds, it's windfall revenue. I've heard someone call it the crust on the pie, right? That is incredibly wrong, and it is an unfortunate naming that we have in here, but I also think that there is a real risk that remains still today, that if the Legislature was to come in and take a look at this, they would somehow believe that that excess really is extra. Again, for some jurisdictions, that quote-unquote "extra" was representing 40% of arguably one of the top two revenue sources they would receive. The five-year CPI smooths out, sharp ups and downs in inflation, and should provide us a much better performance overall in the consolidated tax. The second, and arguably the, among the most important changes in the consolidated tax, is the 0% to 2% plus element that's been added into the formula. As originally designed, we were at 100% plus, or also called 1% plus. It really doesn't matter how you think about it, 1 and 100% of course being the same thing. I like to think about it in terms of percentages because it's really being added to two things. One, your growth rate in population, and two, your growth rate in assessed value. Because those are expressed in percentages, you can imagine that the plus factor that you're adding to those also can logically be in there. You'll also be able to conceptualize this idea, when we think about population growth rates, we think about population growth rates in the 0 to maybe 5% range on average. When we think about assessed value, maybe we think about things from, you know, recently, big negatives, but in normal times, somewhere between minus 3% and plus 5% in terms of assessed value. Now, if I add 100% to those two numbers, everybody's factor, if you will, is gonna be very similar. That makes it very stable, very predictable, very consistent. It also disadvantages perpetuates the status quo and disadvantages faster-growing entities. This is exactly why concern was raised in 2001. And again, I'm not here to suggest that 1+ was somehow, or 100% plus was somehow wrong when it was originally designed. It most certainly was not, right? It was just, the goals were different then than perhaps they are now, right? What is important is that the 100% plus works very well for rural communities. These are communities that don't have the critical mass in terms of where development is taking place, and while there's the potential for struggles later in the future, it certainly works much better for them today. It does not work so well for the urbanized areas, which is why it was changed in 2001. Well, in 2001, we switched to 0% plus. Hey, sounds like a pretty good idea. Let's get rid of everything that was wrong up there and move over to 0% plus. The problem is, if you're multiplying everybody times 0, what happens when everybody is negative, right? You can't do it. The math stops working, and so we default to something called 1+. In addition to that, in addition to that, what happens if only one entity is growing by a positive? This is exactly what happened, and I'll show you in just a moment exactly what happened in Southern Nevada, and I can assure you, it is just a matter of time until it happens here in Washoe County. The advantage is that it was much more equitable when we had revenue to distribute. The downside was is that, you know, it had real distortions when the economy turned, and there are math issues. It's very good in concept, but more difficult in practice. The 2% plus is a compromise, and that 2% doesn't seem like anywhere near a compromise between 100% and 0. We sort of conceptualize, hey, maybe it should be 50% or 25% or something along those lines. That 2% factor is not designed to split the difference between 100% and 0, but rather to do something that looks like a very slow rate of growth for a community. This way, all communities have the ability to participate in the excess, even if only at a small amount. It has the advantages of the 100% plus in terms of stability and in terms of its ability to reflect and adapt to growth. Faster-growing areas will receive more consolidated tax, under 2% substantially more than they would under 100%. Although highly unlikely, there are some potential for math issues, excuse me, math problems to occur even under this. That said, we modeled this against the ups and downs that our state has seen over the past 10 years. That 2% plus would have weathered the storm in every community across the state of Nevada. We believe it's a good balance of stability and adaptability, and therefore, it was part of our recommendation to the Legislative Subcommittee. This is the 0% dilemma that I was talking about before, and this is for the City of Mesquite down in Clark County. This is what happens when only one entity receives, has a positive growth rate. It is also what happens when the pool of excess continues to grow. You'll see that the City of Mesquite is, you know, sees its revenues grow, it sees it decline, it sees it increase, and then all of a sudden, in 2012, when it's the only entity with a positive growth rate, or only one of two entities, its growth goes from 7.1 million dollars to 19.8 million dollars in a single year. This is what prompted the folks in Southern Nevada to all get together and say, hey, maybe we have a problem with the consolidated tax. Now, one thing that I would tell you is that this is while the economy was on its way down, right? So the amount of excess that was available, remember that would grow over time, the way the model is currently, or the C-tax formula is currently designed, this was when there was very little excess. was very little excess, right? We have modeled this on a go-forward basis. I can show you examples where we expect in probably two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen, that an entity that is today receiving about one hundred and fifteen thousand dollars a year will receive one hundred and fifteen million dollars a year as a result of being a pool of excess revenue being larger, the growth rates being negative for most entities, and it just simply being the first one to be positive and essentially being allocated a hundred percent of that excess. I can show you those examples north and south. It's just a matter of time till they rear their head. Today, we're at zero percent plus in some counties and a hundred percent plus in other counties. What is recommended is two percent plus in urban counties, Washoe and Clark, and one hundred percent plus in all rural communities throughout the state. This will provide exactly that type of balance and equity in those distributions that we're hoping to achieve. Why do we do that? Balance is about addressing the differences between urban and rural communities and approximate, approximates a modest rate of growth for all entities. It stabilizes that base growth and allows everyone to participate at least a little in that excess distribution as long as they have a modest rate of growth. When the C-tax was originally designed, it was designed to maintain a status quo. I think it is incredibly important, with due respect to some of the, some of the folks who worked very, very hard to design this tax in its original form, this is not intended to be critical of that. It is merely intended to say, things are different, our goals are a little bit different today than they were then. Number four, setting a floor for property tax declines. Again, this one is really relatively simple. This is the Washoe County assessed value trends for Washoe County, city of Reno and city of Sparks. Forgive the, the colors here, I realize they're not coming up very well, but the only thing that we need to demonstrate here is that if you're below the white horizontal line with substantial negatives that are carried forward over a five-year period, it is pretty tough to ever receive any type of excess. These challenges will again rear their ugly head, and so what, the model has been designed to set a floor of zero. Why would we choose a floor of zero for property tax? Instead of minus seventeen point five percent, we're going to say you get zero. That's because if that house is worth three hundred thousand dollars a year, or that house is worth one hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year, you still have to provide services to the people who are occupying it. Assessed value may be a good proxy in terms of commercial development and some other things, it is not necessarily a good proxy in terms of public service demand. Therefore, assessed value is capped at a negative rate of zero on a go-forward basis, according to the recommendation. This is just summarizing that. Population factor added to the AV factor, sum cannot be less than zero. Today, they're just calculated independently of one another, and again, the sum can't be zero. Why? Factors are intended to reflect growth and, and growth patterns. Sharp declines in assessed value do not necessarily reflect declines in service demand. Declines recorded during the past four years have overshadowed changes in population. They've essentially been something that no one, I think, ever conceived. Declining population basis will need to be factored into the C-tax distribution. If you see your community start to decline by five percent year in and year out, the consolidated tax should have the ability to adapt to that, and we have left that functionality in. Memorandum of Understanding dates? Today, if you get, I believe you have a problem with the consolidated tax, you have until December thirty-first, first of the preceding year to issue a memorandum of understanding saying we need to come together and do something differently. Unfortunately, the projections of how much revenue you're going to get don't come until about forty-five days after that, giving you almost no time to be able to adapt in the event that you need to. The recommendation is to change that to April fifteenth of the current fiscal year, which we believe provides both flexibility to the local governments as well as sufficient time to the Department of Taxation to meet all of their time horizons. This is merely to allow for budgeting and planning flexibility and to make some of the administrative changes that are necessary to have a more effective consolidated tax. I'll just talk briefly about these last three, population estimates, library districts, and incorporation clarification. With regard to population estimates, the census recently came out, some of the populations in communities around the state went down, some went up. The way in which those, those population estimates are generated and reported are incredibly important. There has been some discussion for some time of revisiting that process. The working group agreed, concurred, and is working actively to help in that. Library districts, there was certainly some concern as part of A B seventy-one relative to library districts. Again, those issues have been addressed on a go-forward basis, go-forward basis. Incorporation clarification, this is really twofold. There are places like Laughlin in southern Nevada, which argued that there needs to be increased clarity, if you will, in terms of the process when a new city tries to become a city in determining how much revenue they may ultimately be able to receive. The city of Fernley had similar arguments, although theirs was largely along the lines of, hey, if we take over some additional services, we should be able to receive some additional revenue. The working group concurred that clarification is necessary. I'm not going to stand here and suggest to you that all that Fernley wanted, they were somehow able to receive, that's just not the case, largely because a principal portion of what they were looking for was a redistribution of revenue outside of Lyon County, which the working group could not get comfortable with. There was a general belief that the formation of a new government should not make government more expensive unless the residents of that new government choose to essentially tax themselves. So that, that's where we left it. So in the end, number one is a consensus solution. I owe a debt of gratitude to your staffs who worked absolutely tirelessly and came to those meetings with an attitude of cooperation and without whom we could not have completed this, so I am very thankful in that regard. Number two, I think we have, the recommendations reflect a vastly improved tax policy, both today and on a go-forward basis. They are also forward-looking. The difficult reality in any discussion of taxes is that every dollar can only be spent once. The solutions that we've offered are on a go-forward basis, not requiring individual entities to go back and recast the revenues that they might otherwise be expected to receive. Addresses regional concerns, rural, northern, southern, everyone had specific nuances. I believe we've been able to resolve those, and avoids, and I would argue number five is the most important one. It avoids a legislative solution. Taking the consolidated tax before the Nevada state legislature is a very dangerous proposition. The chairwoman was incredibly forthcoming relative to allowing us flexibility to work through the solution so that local governments had the ability to fashion their own solution to this problem. That said, she was also clear, if we fail to do so, that the legislature would take it up on our behalf. I certainly hope that that does not happen. With that, Mr. Mayor, I am very much appreciative for the opportunity of coming here today.
We appreciate you very much. Any questions, anybody? Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. When you talked about how the, the recommended distribution formula would, would be applied to urban versus rural counties, is there something in your proposed solution that defines what they are? Is that a population? How do we know when somebody becomes rural or more, more than likely urban? And how do you capture that?
Excellent question. Right now, we're working with the Legislative Council Bureau in terms of the bill draft. The way it looks like it's going to be is that will be defined as a hundred thousand or more in terms of population. There's a pretty good divide among Washoe County, Clark County, and everybody else, and that seems to be a fair fit.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, any others? Ms. Frazel.
Mr. Aguero, is there consensus on, on this plan by all the local governments, rural and urban? I mean, I know we've taken this up at the Nevada League of Cities. You had talked about not taking it to the legislature. Is there an agreement on this new formula?
I want to answer that in sort of two ways. My first answer is yes. Among the working group, there was general consensus in terms of everything that I just showed you. The sole exception to that is the city of Fernley, who sort of brought forth a proposal that just didn't have any support among the group, so I would hold them as the sole exception. There is an expectation among the chairwoman that, that what we agree to as a working group would be forwarded to the respective county commissions and city councils. So while we had general consensus among the working group members of this is the right thing to do, I would hesitate to say that we have consensus until city councils and county commissions have essentially blessed the recommendations that are here.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions? Chair entertain a motion to accept the report? Got a motion from Mr. Dorch? Second? Oh, okay. All in favor, say aye. Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Jeremy.
Any other public comment cards?
No, sir.
Okay. My favorite motion, a German. Have a motion, do I have a second? Have a second? All in favor, say aye. Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. Now, we'll take a seventh inning stretch, and then we'll go into a joint meeting between the Reno City Council and the Washoe County Commissioners. The city of Sparks, that the city of Sparks must participate.